I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask that you stand for a minute. I think we have to recognize the Woodruff family and Mayor Woodruff's son who passed away this weekend. And they even sponsored a lot of programs with the city of Sunbury, the police department. And I know I was on school board, but he did a lot for the Schickamy, their music program and that. So he truly was somebody who cared about the community and will be in this still. Thank you. We're gonna wait a second. Here with us, the second John?
Yes, with you.
While she's down there, before we get into the next thing, I'm not sure if any of you had the chance to be not to high school on Sunday. That group of people that are here in town, it was either 384 or 364. And I just never saw that much enthusiasm in my life. But these are all kids that are anywhere from 14 through high school. There was groups here from South Carolina, there's a church here from South Carolina, Illinois, all the east coast. But there's, that's a lot of kids, that's a lot of kids. And every group that walked through the door, everybody stood up and cheered. It was like the beginning of the state football championship or something. There were presents, so if you see some kids running around town, or I know there's some projects in North Thurmond, I believe, up in Augusta Township too, they're working on, but that's what's going on. It's just amazing when you think of the young people nowadays, and they don't get a lot of good routes, but these guys were, guys and girls, are really, really, truly enthused. You know, Friday at 7:30, they have a thing back down there. I'm assuming that's open to the public, I don't really know.
Probably will.
If you get a chance, you might want to stop down there. I'm looking forward, because they're gonna show the before and afters, what they got accomplished and that. It was just, it was really exciting and overwhelming, really, to be there with that many kids, that enthusiasm. It was pretty neat. So anyway, if you get a chance Sunday night, or a Friday night, you might want to stop down there on the tour. There'll be the field house.
That's Saturday, wasn't it?
His Friday.
Your Friday.
This Friday.
How were they invited to the city day?
I think most of, I'm gonna give Randy Brier most of, I'm sure there's probably other people that helped her, but I know she started it last year, we looked at it. We tried to do it about four or five years ago, and just couldn't get it organized. So her, and like I'm saying, I'm sure she got some help, but it was pretty much sponsored by Autobahn Methodist Church. And there was, and I thought it was pretty much all Methodist, there was a lot of Methodist, but there were some other Presbyterians and some Ruthans there too, so it's not just a one denomination thing. But I just never anticipated that many people. I know my church had 14 that went the week before, and they were down in Kentucky, but they never said there was that kind of amount of people that showed up at these things. The enthusiasm, I guess the enthusiasm is just overwhelming, so. I don't know how many people, I don't know how many plumbers they had and that type of stuff, but they clearly had a lot of kids that want to make a difference, and it was pretty neat. So I guess if you get the chance to go down there Friday night, it'll be impressive, I'm sure. Okay, let's go to the roll call.
Hirsing?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
Rechner?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Eister?
The approval of ministry reports of the treasurer, engineer, code office, health department, public works, redevelopment authority, and a planning commission. The second?
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes.
Hirsing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Any audience comment now on any agenda items? Jamie here?
I'm here.
There you are. We're gonna have a public hearing for the project selection?
We're gonna have a public hearing for a budget modification.
Okay. As soon as you get up here, you will officially have the public hearing. Sorry we had to run you over.
I'm sorry. This evening, I would like to entertain any public comments on a budget modification. The city is considering to move the $35,159.61 of CDBG funds from the fire department ladder truck purchase into Chestnut Street reconstruction in the amount of $32,259.65. And it's the OPG basketball court project to make up the rest of that project cost of $2,899.96. The purpose of the public hearing, of course, is to give any of the public a chance to comment, because we are eliminating the fire department ladder truck purchase project. Yes.
Regina Russell, community activist candidate for the city council. I don't know any of the firemen or volunteers. Certainly, I would think that that money is a precedence because of the fires that we've had here in Sunbury, and not only Sunbury. I believe our fire departments assist other townships around us. I would also think that they could use that money for any type of increases in their salaries. There's gotta be something that we can do better and help the fire department than take $35,000 away from them.
The reason why we're moving it is because they are not yet ready to purchase the truck. $35,000 doesn't go very far in a multi-hundred thousand dollar truck purchase. So when they are ready to make that purchase, we'll certainly consider putting CDBG funds into it. The only equipment purchased eligible for CDBG funding is fire equipment. You can't buy any other kind of equipment, just fire equipment, and it can only be equipment. So we couldn't do anything else with it but the truck.
Jamie, I commend you. You know, you're good at what you do.
Thank you.
I just have to say that it angers me as a taxpayer that every time there's a grant, and the grant is gotten for one, whatever your grant, whatever the grant was, it was gotten for a specific need. And it always seems that we are able, not we, the council has some other use for the grant than what it was given for.
And that's not uncommon, and it's not only that happens. Most of the clients that we work with through the City Council Administration of the CDBG Program across the central Pennsylvania often change projects, because what happens is, in this instance, they're not ready to buy the truck. Or there's projects like street reconstruction, and they're not ready to do that project. So we only have so long to spend the money, so we have to put it into something that's going to spend it right away, rather than wait two years until they're ready. So it's not an uncommon thing to move money around. I understand what you're saying with your comment, and...
And excuse my ignorance, but why put in for a grant if you're not ready for it?
The CDBG grant?
I've been here for a minute. Mrs. Russell, what had happened was, they had bought a truck to be refurbished, and since they decided not to refurbish the truck, you buy a new truck. So the money was set aside two years ago roughly?
Yes.
And they only had three years to spend the money. They had decided to take that new truck, which had taken over two years, even order it and be received. So the three years would have expired, so that's why the money's been taken back and put into another project.
So they don't take the $35,000, make it a down payment on a truck, and have installments? The city doesn't do that, we pay like everything outright? As a question, sir?
No. We take and set money aside for the project. They backed out of that project and went to a new truck, okay? And it's been sitting here for two years. There was a three-year period they had, ending, Brad, am I correct?
Yes, I'm part of the Americas too, and...
The Americas?
Once we, once I...
The Americas?
Yes, the Americas is buying the truck. Once we figured out what was the cost to have the truck that we bought refurbished, actually, the only big reason on the truck was the boom itself with the ladder truck, the ladder part, and we're gonna put it on a different chassis. Once we figured out what the cost was, to get a new one, we're looking at about $1.1 million. So at this point, we're, we have everything specked out, ready to go. We're just, right now, we're trying to get the findings together. And we started this, we started the project two years ago, and it's just not feasible at this time. We're still working with the city for them to help us out, because obviously, we can't afford a $1.1 million fire truck. But with the trade of our old truck and the new truck, we're working with the city, and right now, we're not ready to make that payment, so rather than that money go to waste, we're looking for other funds down the road with the city, but right now, we're not ready to make that purchase.
And so does that mean our fire department is not equipped?
No, we have, we have a ladder truck.
With the proper equipment that they need?
Yes, they are equipped with the proper equipment. We're just getting new, because it's that kind, the truck now is 15 years old, and it's now the time to get something out of it, rather than, last time, we waited 20, 21 years, listen, I'm like, we waited about 21 years, and didn't get nothing for our ladder truck. So we're trying to get ahead of the ballgame here by selling it early to get a little bit more back for the new one, so.
Well then, my question would be, if it can't go to the fire department, why is everything going to the Chestnut Street project? Why isn't it going to other things like the sidewalks in all the city?
Excuse me, the procedure that we have to follow at this point is, this is a established time for a public hearing, which is your opportunity to receive public comment. It's not a question and answer proceeding, is that correct?
So I should wait till the end?
Or just make your public comment, which is part of our official record, but we want to make sure the record's clear for her hearing.
Very good. Make my comments at the end, and thank you as always, Jamie.
So Jamie, so there was no other fire company within Sunbury that could have utilized that money?
And again, Jamie, to be fair, Regina, who just sat down, again, this is a question and answer. This is not a time for question and answer, rather, it's simply a time for public comment for the public hearing under the federal regulations of the law.
So sir, is there a way that we're supposed to make a comment?
Sure.
How, how you make the comment? Did I make it already?
There he goes with some more questions, but all you have to do is make a statement.
All right, I hope I made several statements.
You certainly did.
Thank you.
Do you want to make your statement?
I think I understand, I understand what you're doing.
I mean, it just...
With the CDBG funding, the CDBG program is an entitlement grant the city gets every year. It can only be used for certain things, as we've gone over in passing the public hearings. The reason why right now they're putting money into Chestnut and to the OPG project is because they are ongoing projects that can spend the money in a timeframe that it needs to be spent. The Chestnut Street project is a very large project, it needs lots of money to get done, and it's eligible in fundability to be done with this grant. It's getting harder and harder every year to find projects that we can do with the grant funding. Sidewalks are very dependent on, specific sidewalks projects are very dependent on specific locations, and determining fundability with those locations is more difficult. So right now, we are looking at trying to get one project, these two projects specifically done, before looking at putting money into new projects. Any other comments? Okay, we can adjourn the public hearing, and if you would take action to approve the modification.
I'll make that motion.
Eister? Hirsing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
And then the project selection for 2015, I am asking, I am recommending that council approve the Chestnut Street reconstruction for 2015 funding. Right now, we're looking at that money as part of the utilities for Phase Two. Hopefully, in combination with the CDBG competitive that is not yet in place. Working on it. The motion's...
I'll make that motion. I didn't know if there was any comments.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes.
Hirsing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
I think I'm still on there? I would, when we were here last time, we took action to approve a award to Affordable Construction and Demolition for the demolition of 1062 Miller Street. However, we had a bid that arrived late, and it was brought to my attention that the zip code for the city was incorrect on the solicitation of folks, so therefore, the address on their bid was incorrect, and the bid was delayed getting here. So upon the advice of the solicitor, I would ask that you rescind that award to Affordable Construction and Demolition.
I'll make that motion. Is the rebidding part of that motion, or?
We can do that next, if you don't mind.
Okay, no problem.
Hirsing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
And then I would ask for a motion to reject all the bids and approval to rebid the demolition expense.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister? Hirsing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you have an approval change order for Chestnut Street?
Yes, last meeting was filled, but didn't have the exact figure. Change order number one for $3,068.20. I'd like to make a motion that we approve that change order, the Chestnut Street Phase One project.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes.
Hirsing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Is Megan here, SRI? You have the floor.
This is an economic development, we're currently working on redoing our website and linking us to more financial resources and business resources, so we can increase that focus on the website and also improve the functioning of the site for our staff to be able to update that as needed. Promotions committee, the RAP cards have arrived, so please, this summer, stop by to pick these up. These are for the events over the course of the year. The discount card, we are wrapping that up. If anybody knows any other businesses that might like to be on, please direct them to us as soon as possible. We'll probably be finalizing that this week. We also met with a vendor talking about a local gift card, very different from the promotions card. The gift card would actually be something that would be able to be utilized at any participating business in town. Some would give a gift card, let's say $25, and it could be used at any of the participating businesses. Other communities have like a paper card, but we're looking at something that would be a little bit more official, kind of like a Visa card, almost, that would have like some sort of logo on it representing our town. The concert series for this month is River Blue Jeans, that's Sunday, the 26th, from 2 to 5. So please make sure to stop down there to enjoy that. Renaissance Festival had over 400 people in attendance, so it was a really nice success. We hope to be able to continue that again next year. River Festival, I am going to talk about two more things, and I'll turn it over to Slade, so he can talk about that. In regard to Albright Center, the Albright Council, we did make our goal of $207,000 raised from local businesses, helping to support that program. And that money, we have, so we've now received all that by June 30th. We have committed to construction of the elevator to make the building handicap accessible. So that's another huge step in our progress. We have received architectural drawings, and we're getting ready to move forward on some other projects, and that allows the capital campaign to get started.
Where's that work at, on the back of those, in the front, the side, where? Yeah, you know?
The elevator is going to go near the sort of grand entrances. It'll be the entrance to the left of that, which is the currently kind of primary entrance. So you'll walk in there and...
That's a street level then, right, you don't go upstairs?
Correct, it's at street level, there's a ramp going through that doorway, very slight ramp, and then it'll be the stairwell right there.
I was often wondering, did they talk about that for 50 years? I don't know if they'd put it like in the back, but somehow, how would they do that?
It was talked about a lot. It went through many renditions, we talked about just about every stairwell, but that stairwell reaches every floor, and aren't many stairwells that do that. So that was the best place to place it, also for people coming in, not making the door handicap around to the back of the building. So it's right there at the front, and then the grand entrance, say, becomes the grand entrance, rather than temporary, everybody comes to that top entrance. And we do now have an open position at SRI for our, is a position that Zach was in. Last month, he got an offer to work at Voice House in America, so he had to give his resignation to us, unfortunately. We're very happy that he's moved on to, to a great position there. That is everything I have any other questions on, if you can. Slade, do you want to talk about this?
Nope, I don't mind at all. One thing I will piggyback on Megan about is the Albright Council and the Albright Community Work Center. If you know any businesses that are looking to be a part of a tax credit program, you'd be more than happy to have them, we'll send John to talk to them, or Megan, or people who won't first in the tax credit program, and it's a savings for them, and the money stays right here, doesn't go to the state. So that's an important factor, everybody needs to know. And so if you know anybody has a business and is looking to get some tax credits and keep the money here, we'd be more than happy to talk to them. So now, one new River Festival. Here we are again, about a month out. We're in pretty good shape right now. We have several new things this year. They've been around and they're coming back. We have Chalk to Walk, we have a young intern from High School, Schickamy High School, who's gonna take over Chalk to Walk. He's a good artist, and so we're gonna have Chalk to Walk again for the kids, $5 entry fee, and then they have a chance to win prizes with their $5 entry fee. Again, we'll have the train rides, we have the veterans' ride first, and then also, we're asking, if anybody has any veterans, veteran vehicles, old army cars, whatever, to bring down and to show off, and then after the veterans' ride, they can bring them up and make it part of the car cruising. And they'll be able to enter their vehicles for free into the car cruising. Then we have two rides after that, children-oriented, one is Princes and Princesses, and then one is the Beauty and the Beast characters. And that was all put together by Ellen Boyer from the Schickamy Schools Theater Department. New this year, we have a boat parade, put together by Mr. Lagerman. I think he said he had like 30 boats lined up so far for the boat parade. That'll take place right after the cardboard boat regatta, but right before the Submarine Motors River Festival After Hours. And if you caught that, Submarine Motors is sponsoring the River Festival After Hours, so that'll continue again this year, such a good turnout last year, so we're looking forward to that. This year, we're having a Dave Matthews tribute band. Of course, we're gonna have all your normal stuff, it'll start off Thursday with the Valley's Got Talent. We do have a new emcee this year. Sean had to go to the beach with his family, I tried to talk him out, it didn't work. So we got somebody a little better looking, Valerie Gisana from WBRE. She will be our emcee this year for the Valley's Got Talent. Then Friday at noon, we'll kick off, and Friday night's entertainment is Jessie. Jessie is back, this is Jessie's last year playing together, this is it, final year. So they wanted to play River Festival, and I said absolutely. So they'll be playing Friday night, and then Saturday, we have a whole day full of entertainment. So I think that's pretty much everything for River Festival.
Any questions for Slade?
Yeah, I have one question. What do you do with traffic?
Huh?
What do you do with traffic?
Traffic, I'll refer to Terry.
Jim.
Terry and Jim, traffic, we're going down Walnut, switch Walnut.
Switching Walnut.
It'll come down right through that Walnut.
That's what I wanted, everybody was asking me, and I said, "I'll find out one day."
I guess we shouldn't go.
And then how was the community notified about this traffic?
It'll be in the newspaper and on the radio.
Thank you.
They'll be signing, correct, they'll be signing.
They'll be signing also, yes.
Lots of signings. Okay. We have a resolution for, where is this property, 129 North 11th Street, another nuisance property. It's a safety we do all the time, City Council, Highway Act, and Board of Health and Adopters for this resolution. Property located 129 North 11th Street, it's a public nuisance. And a motion to accept?
Motion, how many?
The second?
Eister?
Yes.
Hirsing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Do you have anything for redevelopment authority, what we're at right now, or anything else?
Sure, we had a successful hearing in front of Judge Reese just last week, and that was for the property on 11th Street. That was published in the Daily Item, and explained that the judge granted the what's called real possession, so the city has complete ownership and the ability to now tear it down. That was connected to the bids that Jamie just reviewed with you. The second thing, where we had a piece of success, was the property on South 4th Street, where the turrets are, it used to be Danny Blaski's home. That property, JP Morgan, was attempting to slow us down in the process, and Judge Reese said that that wasn't valid, and that we should proceed, but we're moving on with the next steps with it.
Any questions? New business appoint, chief administrative officer, non-uniform pension plan, John?
We have to appoint someone who will be the administrative officer for the non-uniform pension plan, just like we did the last week for the, or last meeting for the uniform pension plan. I don't know if we've actually selected anyone at this point, but we need to discuss that and appoint someone to be the chief administrative officer.
They don't meet on a regular? Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
There's going to be some interaction with those folks, they're coming up, Terry, when are they coming up, next week?
Yeah, Tuesday.
Is that something we're going to do?
I don't see how we can.
We can use this...
Go ahead, John.
We can use this as a heads up, Terry and I are gonna meet with them next week, and we should have some information to present to council upon our meeting.
Okay, all right. All right, we'll just keep that a hold on for the next meeting. John, I'm about refund of six years' taxes.
Yeah, we have a hall box toward 1 Market Street, and we're proposing to refund six years of taxes on that property, and make a motion that we approve the refunding of those taxes.
What was the double payment, John?
I don't have the details here, unfortunately.
It was over assessment, they over assessed the size of the property. The county already refunded the property back, their taxes portioned back towards us, and they asked us if we were gonna do the same amount to it, and I think the school's in a fire process too. They got an overview picture of the property itself, they couldn't get into it, and it was an over assessment. So they're asking us, it's about six years, it's like $17, $18 each year, it's not a lot of money overall. Do you guys, anybody got a copy of that? What's on right there?
2010, there was a refund being given for $38.46. 2011, $38.46.
So six years, thirty days, so it's about $240, something like that.
And then this year, we're gonna be in $41.28.
So it's less than $240. County already refunded the money back, I wonder if they would follow suit again.
Are they paying anything on the property?
Yes, they are, they just, they already paid on the taxes and the assessment.
So they just lowered it?
They just lowered it.
And they should have done it six years ago, yeah?
They should have done it six years ago. They finally got into an overview of the property assessment, but itself, and they see that was, they have too much of a... Very itself, it was embarrassed, so.
All right, can we get a motion? John made the motion, I guess.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes.
Hirsing?
Yes. That vote hurt you, didn't it, John, give the money back?
I know, I already got it.
Jim, with open container law?
Yes, on New Year's Eve, let's move a motion.
There's a bunch of them on the resolution.
Oh, Wine Brew Fest, I'm sorry, and New Year's Eve.
And Sunday concerts.
We didn't see that, Sunday concerts.
On your detail.
Okay, Sunday concerts, I'll make that part of the motion.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes.
Hirsing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Who would pay invoices, John?
We have $152,607.21 of general fund, and by voting $66.73 of liquid fuel invoices to pay, I make a motion that we pay our bills.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes.
Hirsing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Taxes honoration, John?
We have five individuals, two of whom are deceased, two who are non-residents, and one person who is on social security disability. I make a recommendation, or I make a motion that we exonerate those individuals from paying their taxes.
Eister?
Yes.
Hirsing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Audience comment, anything specific from the audience? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, I have a question regarding the events of this past weekend. They had a baseball playoff, and they started them at 10 o'clock. It penalized a lot of... It penalized a lot of the kids because they go to church. And there was one team that started off, and they had to forfeit the game because the parents said the kids are going to church. Is there any way that these events, like the soapbox derby and everything, could be moved back to maybe noon for next year so that these kids would not be penalized?
Well, talking about the tournament, that all depends on how many teams are in the tournament. If you, if you, if you only had like five or six, and I know they had a very successful tournament, they had over thirteen of them there.
Right.
So that would dictate to what time you have to start, because you don't want to be playing at midnight on Sunday.
I know.
As far as the other events, we could talk to, I guess, recreation and see which one. What time does the soapbox party start?
Seven morning, set up. If we would wait like you suggested, we, we didn't discuss about the church issue and the little kids. We wouldn't be getting done until dark. So we have two problems there. Running it so late is a problem, okay? And finding the help to come out late like that.
Okay, could the baseball tournaments be started on a Friday night?
They did.
You know, they did?
They did.
Okay. All right, I just, you know, there was, the first team that got to play, they had to forfeit the game, so, you know, it penalized that whole team.
But that happened, again, it's all based on all the numbers.
Okay, and can I ask, was that run was not running Sundbury this year?
Well, they decided to move. They were just a group that came to Sundbury to utilize our event basically for, well, the exposure and so forth, and they grew very big here, over two thousand runners. So they moved to Seale's Grove, they used the high school complex, I'm told, which is a lot of room down there, and that's why.
Okay, because it just seemed to take a lot of people that normally would be coming to Sundbury.
The run that we had in Sundbury, and I've interrupted you, though, I bet there was a hundred people. I was there for the opening of that, and it was very enthusiastic, and it was, you know, there was veterans there and people with their animals and all that kind of stuff. So hopefully, we, we built a good base there that that will continue to grow. I don't know if they got a lot of coverage on that Leeds place up in northern Pennsylvania, you know, where they have that campsite and what it's all about, but it's a very worthwhile project, and I'm hoping that we, I don't know what the plan is, recreation probably stayed with it. But it was, that was very impressionable also, so hopefully, we can build from that.
I'd just like to interject something else on that run, is that that run is a national thing, and a lot of the, a lot of the competitors in that run register times. And it has to be a very specific run. Last year, the difficulty was, we couldn't get a clearance from North Oak Southern to run the route that the, that the directors of the race wanted to run. And that was a problem by changing the route. And I don't know if there was a situation where they had to zigzag some stuff to get the accurate mileage and stuff like that, but that was another factor. Where they went this year, it was an easier layout of the run, and it wasn't involving crossing anything that was outside of Seale and Grove's realm of being able to do that stuff.
Questions?
I have a tax question. When you. You say your name, please. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. I have a tax question. We, we got.